Hundreds of coalitions around the world, and our goal is to reduce the number of unintentional injuries. They are the number one cause of death for American children. National Injury Prevention Day was established to create awareness in local communities about the importance of injury prevention. Injury prevention includes education, advocacy, distribution of safety devices such as helmets and car seats, collaboration, and more. One child injured or killed is one child too many. And I am blessed to have a role in our community that takes me to a variety of different places, to a variety of different audiences, and to speak on behalf of our children and their families. It truly takes a village to keep our children safe and healthy. And as a resident of Fresno County, I am proud to accept this proclamation and your support.
Thank you. Any comments from my colleagues up here on the board? Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this proclamation? All right, hearing none. I'll bring it back. I'll make a motion to accept this proclamation. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously.
We now move to item number five, under supervisor Mendez, proclaim November 5th, 2024 as J. Randall McFarland Day in Fresno County in recognition of his service on the Fresno County Historical Landmarks and Records Advisory Commission since 1977.
Okay, this proclamation we're proclaiming today, November 5th, 2024, as J. Randall McFarland Day in Fresno County in recognition of Randy McFarland's service on the Fresno County Historical Landmarks and Records Advisory Commission since 1977. Attending, Randy, you want to go ahead and come up with, we have David Rodriguez, Commissioner of the Historical Landmarks Records Advisory Commission. We have Sally Gomez, our intern librarian, and Karen Colette. Is she gonna, is she here?
She's just waved.
Is she coming up? What are you hanging back for? I've, just before Randy speaks, Randy announces, so he's usually the guy talking at parades, a lot, lot of things Randy does. I think I first met Randy, knew about him, but first met him in 1991 at the Kings River Water Association. He was their official historian. And how many books have you written, Randy?
I'm working on my ninth now, county history.
Yeah. You have a lot of, lot of great stuff. The only thing regret I have, Randy, is I never had you come to my ranch, and we get up on top of the levee where we can imagine and see where Summit Lake is.
Never too late.
Yeah. So you need to come out. If you can come out, we need to do that. So Randy, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Ms. Mendez, members of the board. I can't tell you how surprised and greatly honored I felt when I got the call about this award. And I assure you that it was a, it has been, it was a labor of love all those years. The board, I don't think there's any members of the board that are still onboard that were acted on when I completed my 30 years as chairman and stepped down from that because I figured 30 years was more than enough. And Dave has been sitting in, you've been the chairman all that time, haven't you, since then? And Dave became a good friend, and we've worked closely together. But what happened was, I would have stayed on the commission, but the commission, because of your board, has a very strict rule that you're allowed to miss two meetings in a calendar year. And this illness that I am fighting, which is a, deals with my breathing, and I won't bore you with all the details, but basically, it hit me in about the second week in February. And so I've gone on nine months with it now, and basically, everything I enjoy doing, public performances, football, parades, and my client, the Kings River Water Association, I have had to leave because I just couldn't, couldn't, couldn't do it. And in the case of the Landmarks Commission, I knew I would miss all five of our board meetings, and that wasn't, so I resigned. And I just want to tell the board how much I appreciate not only the putting up with me as the chairman and a member for so many years, but also, it is so important that this board continue its unwavering support to Fresno County history and maintaining it and promoting it. And we've had many occasions over time, over these past many years, where we had the opportunity to tour parts of the county, to have special events. And Fresno County has an incredibly rich history dating back to 1856. County was much larger originally than it is today, but that really, really doesn't matter. Of course, it's totally different now than it, than it used to be. But this board has, should really take a bow for all the support succeeding members of the Board of Supervisors have given to the Landmarks Commission and other historical actions and markers and so forth that we have been privileged to place around the county. And I know that, Dave, you would agree with me that the support we get from the Board of Supervisors and the county staff and the library staff, because the library staff is our, they are our administrators, and we, it basically couldn't be done without them. And we get nothing but good support, and the people of Fresno County are the beneficiaries. So I just want to thank all of you so very, very much for your support to the Landmarks Commission and the maintenance of historical records, which we've done a tremendous amount of work on over the last 50 years, and just the general promotion of the county's history. And any opportunity that I know, I'm not on the commission anymore, but I'd be glad to make presentations, and I know other members of the commission would too. So any questions any of you might have?
No, I don't know if you've been in the back and actually seen where we have all the, all the minutes.
Yeah, I have seen that. It's been a long time, but.
Yeah.
And that's great.
Yeah, I mean, all preserved and.
That's terrific.
Yeah.
Well, it's a, it's a, the history after, if it's lost, pretty hard to replace. You can get some out of newspapers and so forth, but a lot of things aren't covered. And so the county's taking, from the very beginning, taking the position that it had to maintain its historical records has always, that's always been a real plus in my, in my book.
Any comments from board members? Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public, oh, Sally, if you'd like to say.
I just wanted to say a quick thank you to Mr. McFarland for all the work that you've done. We haven't had a chance to work together, but I was a fledgling at the Selma Enterprise. I didn't have the opportunity to work with you, but you're, you were already a legend when I started in the early 2000s.
We'll have to get together and talk.
For sure. So I just wanted to recognize that.
Well, thank you very much. David?
Randy and I come several years back, first thing I realized is Randy had a natural passion for history. And to be a historian and have that passion is a treasure trove of information, and he has so much archived in his own home, and I know he's looking for a place to go. But I know his wife would like to bring him back in his house. But since I've known Randy, he's been a very passionate man, and I've tried to mentor my, be, he was more like a mentor to me coming through the, through the board. But when he left, he looked at me and said, oh, it's yours, but I don't want it, I'm not ready. And look what happened. But nevertheless, Randy is a Fresno County treasure. He should be honored as such and remembered as such. He's probably done more for the history of Fresno County and the small communities, which is more important than the big picture. You know, city of Fresno is not the only history in Fresno County. He's done a lot for the south, southwest communities out there, and their treasure is being, in many of his books, are being preserved. So if anybody else is out there in the public has any passion for history, it's very rewarding. And all I got to say is congratulations, Randy, and you're sure in the hell going to be missed.
Thank you, David.
With that, is there a motion to approve the proclamation? We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It passes. If you could come forward, we'd like to get a picture with you.
Yeah, have your wife come up.
Laurel?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything this morning.
Thank you.
Sally, good morning, how are you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for this.
You know, your grandpa was my mailman.
Oh, he was.
I used to date your uncle Johnny, and I think I babysat you.
Oh, man, you need to, you need to call and tell me some of those stories. Hey, David, how are you?
How's that?
One more, one more, one more, Sally.
We now move to item number six, under supervisor Pacheco, adopt resolution to recognize November 11th, 2024 as Veterans Day in Fresno County.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to recognize November 11th, 2024 as Veterans Day. It's important that we honor, support, and recognize the valor, courage, and dedication and sacrifices of the veterans and active-duty military men and women in the armed forces. The Veteran's Service Office is under the Department of Social Services, work hard to serve these veterans, and commits to helping them in any way that they can. Here today to speak about this resolution is Sonya Bougaye, Director of Department of Social Services, as well as Veteran Service Officers Kyle Pennington and others. Director Bougaye?
Thank you very much. And with us also is Stephen Olson, one of our veterans. So really appreciate this proclamation and recognition. Veteran Services Office is probably the smallest unit in our department, but they are small and mighty. They serve over 5,000 veterans each year and provide access to veterans' benefits. Their core, core function is really helping our veterans apply for veterans, federal veterans' benefits. But larger than that, they're really helping veterans navigate all the services and supports they need while these services are pending. And Kyle has taken over, I really can't call you new anymore, over a year ago, and the resource that your board approved for us, your board in 2023, increased our Veteran's Services representatives for the first time in a number of years. We went from four to six Veteran's Services reps. That additional resource made a tremendous impact on how we provide access to Veteran's Services to all our veterans, and not just in city of Fresno, but throughout the county. While our office is only located in one location, we're actually trying to be out there and help veterans access services. They make a tremendous amount of impact, and there are organizations out there that help veterans access Veteran's Services but charge them for it. We do not. And our Veteran's Services reps actually know the federal regulation and what it takes, and have this holistic approach to help veterans navigate our services. So I'm going to hand it over to Kyle, but really appreciate, recognition our veterans, and the importance of this service and your board's support over this past couple of years to increase access to Veteran's Services for our veterans.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here today. My story, I'm a veteran myself. Back in 2006, I separated from the Army for the first time and was suffering from PTSD and traumatic brain injury, and somebody told me that I needed to go get Veteran's Services connected to my benefits. I had no idea what that meant. So I went to the Veteran's Service Offices, Shawn Six, same, same place that it is today, and I walked in there and I had a horrible experience, so, so much so that it turned me off from Veteran's Services for two years. I didn't go look for mental health services, I wasn't trying to get connected to my benefits that I deserved, completely turned me off from the whole idea of receiving some sort of benefit. I've kept that in mind since becoming the Veteran's Service Officer over two years ago now. I talk to my staff about it all the time, and our charge is really to provide the best possible customer service, the best services possible to all the veterans that step foot in our office, or the ones that we're communicating and servicing remotely or virtually. I have with me today a Marine Corps veteran, his name is Steve Olson, he's going to give you a quick testimonial of kind of his trial and then success that he found by using our office.
Hello. So for two decades, for one reason or another, I'd have one claim denied for whatever reason, and just like Kyle, I was very turned off by the VSO here in Fresno. I went eight years without benefits and just basically accepted what was thrown at me. The outreach with the VSO doesn't stop just by walking in their door. This guy hounded me for two years because we saw each other at the same gym every morning at 5:00 a.m., rehabbing lingering injuries we both had. Kyle said, why don't you come in? We got your six, you can trust us. So I made that appointment with the same confidence I go into the DMV. Two years later, they took me from a 10% disability rating to 100, and now I get every single benefit that was promised to me in 1997 when I signed those papers. And it's not just me. Because of, I don't see her here, but Michelle Bloodins, my VSR, my little boys go to college for free. The work these guys do is amazing, and it's life-changing.
Thanks, buddy. So we get asked the question all the time, like, what's the big difference now, right? Obviously, thanks to the help of the Board of Supervisors, we were allocated two new service rep positions. It takes a service rep about a year and a half to be fully functional on their own, to understand all of the different policies, procedures, and laws at both the county level, the state level, and the federal level. They're very, very professional, they're experts in their craft, and they're the subject matter experts when it comes to disability claims and connecting veterans with any of their benefits. I brought some of my staff with me here today, they're right here in the, in the front row. They're the folks that are doing the dirty work where the rubber meets the road on a daily basis, meeting with veterans, they're showing up early, they're staying late, they have a passion for doing this, and that's what really makes us successful. Additionally, our community engagement, we've took a charge to get out into the rural areas of Fresno County. We're out in Kalinga once a month, we're in Reedley once a month, we're in Sanger once a month. We try to go find those veterans that don't know that we exist, and there's a lot of them that are still out there, believe it or not. We'll be a random event, because we go to every event. My philosophy is, if we can find somebody that impacts a veteran, whether it be a neighbor, or a son, or a daughter, or a grandfather, or whatever it may be, it's worth us going to this event, you know what I mean? So that they can be educated about the services that we provide. If nothing else, give them a business card and a pamphlet, let them know, hey, there's some guys over there on Shawn Six that can take care of you and get you connected with your benefits. So largely, that charge has been very successful for us in expanding our network and finding veterans that didn't know that we provided services. Additionally, Fresno County is very unique, and I talk about this a lot everywhere that I go. Having been to a bunch of different conferences around the state of California with all the other county service officers, Fresno County, the Veteran's Services here, we all work together. All the different organizations partner together in community engagement, and it really builds capacity for us, right? So we have veterans that come to my office pretty frequently, and they'll ask about a service that we don't necessarily provide there, and we don't just send them down the road packing and say, hey, go on over to, you know, the VA hospital and do this or that. We do a seamless handoff, right? So we call that other organization, we have that other organization come to our office, meet with the veteran there. We have all the forms that they have to fill out and intake, or do whatever we need to do, so it's as seamless as possible. We also have some folks in the crowd today that are from some of our community partners here supporting this. We instituted walk-in Wednesdays, right? Previously, it was walk-in all the time, which was very chaotic. Two years ago, we switched to appointments, so we do appointments on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, and we do walk-ins on Wednesdays. Because of the PACD Act, this became kind of crazy. I'm sure some of your offices received less than positive ideas or comments about this thing. No lie, we would have veterans lined up at 5:00 o'clock in the morning to receive services at 8:00. So it wasn't uncommon that we would service close to 70 or 80 veterans per Wednesday because of the PACD Act. Now it's kind of come down a bit, we've ridden that wave, I'd like to think, and it's very manageable at this point. As it stands right now, we average about 60 veterans that we provide services to on Wednesdays, we answer 34 phone calls on average on Wednesdays, and we return about 45 messages on Wednesdays. We're still a very small staff. Another process that we've kind of implemented is the implementation of the Veteran Work Study Program. So the Veteran Work Study Program is when a veteran is using a VA education benefit, they have the ability to work somewhere that does veteran-centric things, up to 25 hours a week, tax-free, it's a benefit for them. The money comes all from the VA, it's an awesome place, we just got to give them a place to work essentially. We have four of these work studies, one here in the crowd with us today. They augment our staff and do an amazing, amazing job for us with front office and reception type things. So just some statistics for the, for the last year. Everybody's, you know, mental health and military sexual trauma screening, we work as part of Proposition 63 to receive funding for different screenings and referrals we do for both of those things in particular, and we saw a 96% increase in our screenings this year, from 322 to 632, and that's from August to August, I believe. Mental health and outreach referrals, a 452% increase. We went from the first year I was the VSO of doing 2,391 outreach events to this last year, 13,219. And then dependent fee waivers, so a veteran gets connected at 0% service connection, their dependent can go to school, the state of California, at any community college, state school, or UC school for free, tuition-free. They still have to pay registration costs and parking passes and books and all that stuff. But we had a 215% increase in providing those. And that's because even a small program, we've gotten out and about in the community, gone to a lot of different high school resource type things to educate the high school students who may have parents that are veterans of this program is available to them. So that about sums it up for what we've done over the course of the last year. I appreciate this proclamation. I know this year, it's kind of focused on the successes of the Veteran's Service Office. We really wanted to highlight some of the things that we're doing. We have, the veteran community is still very small, and word travels by mouth like you wouldn't believe. We have walk-in customers coming from Stockton, coming from Southern California, coming from Bakersfield, coming from all over the place because they've heard these service reps right here do an amazing job, and they absolutely do. At this time, I'll take any of your questions.
Brian?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we don't have any, any questions, but I think you can see from the level of enthusiasm, we have the good person at the job, and while he doesn't get much airtime, it's another service the county provides that not many people know about. So District One has a proud tradition of this. My predecessor, Supervisor Larson, is a very proud Marine and appreciates this office. My grandfather was a former World War II veteran that stormed the beaches of Normandy. In addition to having the veterans home in District One, District One takes Veterans Day very seriously and appreciates all the work from our director and their staff to help our veterans. So we appreciate your presentation, and if after the public, I would make the motion that we adopt this resolution for Veterans Day of this upcoming year.
Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Please step forward.
Thank you. Yeah.
Is it, is it, is it Steve, morning?
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Appreciate it. Good job.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you. Thank you. We got the whole department here, here, yeah, full division, I guess. Thank you. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for doing well. Absolutely, sir, thank you. Thanks, Kyle. Appreciate it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was a get back for number one, yeah.
We now move to item number seven, under supervisor Pacheco, proclaim November 2024 Prematurity Awareness Month in Fresno County.
Okay, once again, it is my pleasure to proclaim the month of November Prematurity Awareness Month in Fresno County. This proclamation raises awareness of the impact of premature birth and the ways in which our communities can help to combat it. The Black Wellness and Prosperity Center, as well as First Five Fresno County, are two organizations that do great work with children in our community and have brought this item forward for recognition. Here today to speak about this proclamation is Breonna Gaines Barrett with Black Wellness and Prosperity, as well as Fabiola Gonzalez from Fresno First Five and members of their staff.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Breonna Gaines Barrett. Of course, good morning, Board of Supervisors, City Council members. I want to start by expressing gratitude for issuing this proclamation recognizing Prematurity Awareness Month. We appreciate the board's and city council's leadership in shedding light on this critical health issue in our community. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge our valued partners at First Five Fresno County. Their ongoing support and collaboration are essential as we work together to confront the factors contributing to preterm birth. Premature birth affects one in 10 infants and is the leading cause of death before a child's first birthday in the United States, in California, and right here in Fresno. This tragic reality highlights the urgent need for both awareness and action. Furthermore, babies who are born too soon often face long-term health challenges that not only affect families but also place a burden on our entire community. Alarmingly, black families are disproportionately affected, experiencing preterm birth rates that are 50% higher than those of other populations. At the Black Wellness and Prosperity Center, we aim to tackle these disparities in black maternal and child health outcomes. We understand that a variety of factors contribute to preterm birth. While some are within our control, others require deeper exploration and concerted efforts. Evidence shows that racism significantly contributes to adverse birth outcomes, including preterm births, affecting black women at alarming rates. Our commitment involves addressing these root causes both at the individual and systemic levels. The impact of preterm birth is devastating. Families in our community are facing the unimaginable pain of losing babies to preventable complications. This is a tragedy that we must respond to with urgency and empathy. It is essential to Alarmingly, black families are disproportionately affected, experiencing preterm birth rates that are 50% higher than those of other populations. At the Black Wellness and Prosperity Center, we aim to tackle these disparities in black maternal and child health outcomes. We understand that a variety of factors contribute to preterm birth. While some are within our control, others require deeper exploration and concerted efforts. Evidence shows that racism significantly contributes to adverse birth outcomes, including preterm births affecting black women at alarming rates. Our commitment involves addressing these root causes, both at the individual and systemic levels. The impact of preterm birth is devastating. Families in our community are facing the unimaginable pain of losing babies to preventable complications. This is a tragedy that we must respond to with urgency and empathy. It is essential to recognize the significant role of trained, culturally competent, non-medical professionals such as doulas and community health workers. These individuals play a vital role in supporting the black and underserved communities and helping to improve the maternal and infant health outcomes during pregnancy. Addressing the racial disparities in prematurity and maternal health demands our collective focus and unwavering commitment. I urge you to consider how we can work together to promote healthier outcomes for all families in Fresno. Thank you again for recognizing Prematurity Awareness Month and supporting the initiatives leading us toward a healthier future and outcomes. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Fabiola Gonzalez, Executive Director of First Five Fresno County, and I'll just complement some of what you just heard, because I think this is a moment to bring awareness about prematurity. And, you know, it's the leading cause of death in children under age of five. The earlier that a baby is born, the greater their chances of health problems, and I want to make sure that you leave this morning with some of those health problems in mind. Babies that are premature are born before their organ systems and bodies are fully developed, which can lead to serious health risks like respiratory, vision, and hearing. We have babies, when they're born early, that they have developmental delays, so they're more likely to lag behind full-term babies on developmental milestones. And then many of these babies have educational challenges, so they have an increased risk of low performance in English, language arts, and mathematics. So this morning, we joined in celebrating the strength of premies and their families, because you heard that there's many families that have premies in Fresno County, and we acknowledge their courage and resilience of those parents who have faced premature birth. We show appreciation also to the NICU staff. We thank all of those healthcare professionals who every day provide vital care to premature babies. And finally, I want to leave you with some ways that communities can help prevent premature births, including expanding access to prenatal care. So anytime before you, you could, you have the power to support increasing access to prenatal care through Medicaid, eligibility for pregnant women. We can, communities can identify and treat women at risk for preterm delivery. This can include managing chronic conditions like obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and any type of tobacco use. And finally, supporting early intervention. When you hear of programs that are doing things for families that have babies that are not meeting those developmental milestones, supporting those programs is supporting the decrease in premature birth in our community. So we thank you this morning for joining us in creating more awareness about the importance of doing what we can to reduce the number of premature babies in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Mr. Chairman, as Chair of First Five, we've reached out to a lot of organizations to help improve our numbers, and things are working. So again, with that, I would make a motion that we accept this proclamation on behalf of the Premature Awareness Month.
Very good. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Is there a second to that motion?
There's all second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Please step forward so we can get a picture with you, and bring any staff that you would like to be in the picture, too.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice sticker, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll take up the items that were pulled from consent by Supervisor Brando. Item 25, under Supervisor Brando, Supervisor Quintero, adjourned in memory of Doug Vegum.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we just had a number of ceremonial items, but I did want to highlight the passing of a former Fresno County Supervisor, and that's Doug Vegum. And Doug lived in District Two, and I got to know him over the years and visited him at his home a couple of times. And Doug passed away a couple of weeks ago. Former Supervisor Vegum passed away a couple of weeks ago at the age of 81. And he had served here at the county from 1989 to 1996 and gave his very best, a very smart, intelligent individual, looked at things sometimes dramatically different than everybody else, but but that allowed him to bring a lot to the table. He was survived by his wife Becky, his daughter Stephanie, his brother, his sister-in-law, along with many nephews and nieces. He's from a large Armenian family. And when I was a Fresno City Councilman, I got a call one, this is before I knew him, I got a call from a mutual friend and said, hey, have you ever had a chance to talk with Supervisor Doug Vegum? And I said, no, I really haven't. I know of him, but, so I was introduced to him, and there was a big issue that everybody was fighting over at City Hall, and I went over and sat in his garage for about an hour, and he just really shined a lot of light on things that I hadn't seen before, and so just a good, solid guy. And so I just, along with Sal today, we wanted to adjourn today's meeting in memory of former Supervisor Doug Vegum.
Thank you for bringing this forward, Supervisor. I got to know Doug for many years as well. One thing I could say about him, he was always thinking for the best of Fresno County. And sometimes his ideas were a little bit outside the box, but they made sense once you kind of readjusted him a little bit. And but always had the passion for for the best for Fresno County, and a lot of the the work that he did and the ideas that he had today are being implemented here as well, because he knew everything from administratively as well as just connecting with the people. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Bring it back to the board for a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we have a proclamation, or it's actually an adjourned in memory of that we're going to deliver to the family, but I will make a motion to approve today adjourned in memory of former Supervisor Doug Vegum.
Second. We have a motion, a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. Thank you.
Just going to throw this in. Appreciate, you know, Supervisor Vegum, but I actually see him in a different light, and that's behind the scenes with Darren Collegian. And that was, those were always very interesting meetings. So that's all I'm going to say.
That concludes all our consent items. We return to your regular agenda under item number eight, under the Administrative Office. Consider and take action on requests for determination of public convenience or necessity in regard to the application of alcohol beverage license type 20 filed by Mr. Singh to be used at 3035 South Chestnut Avenue, Fresno.
All right, Ron, dazzles us with your presentation.
So what I do, this might be the first one I've done, an ABC license, right? Have you ever seen me do one of these?
Yes.
So Ron Alexander, analyst with the County Administrative Office. As mentioned, this is a type 20 ABC license brought before your board for the determination of of public convenience or necessity. And a type 20 license is the off sale of beer and wine. County policy states that the following criteria must be met prior to issuing public convenience or necessity, that the license would not tend to create a law enforcement problem, that the issuance will provide a needed service to the community, and that the issuance will have a positive impact on the local economy. The applicant's provided a written response in regards to those three criteria. Public works was contacted, there are no zoning issues relating to that application, and the Fresno County Sheriff's Department has been contacted and reviewed the application. The applicant is in Census Track 12.02. Four off sale licenses are allowed within that Census Track. There are currently only two off sale licenses. However, there is a moratorium on type 20 licenses, so ABC sends these before your board to make the determination of public convenience. This is a map of the Census Track. The the location, the Census Track is actually here in Tan. And you can see the applicant is located here, whereas the other two existing licenses are up at the north part of that Census Track. And this just states that those two are located about two miles from the applicant. This is an aerial view of the applicant's site. And the north view of the applicant's site is vacant property. It's currently, the proposal is to be a grocery store to be built on that site. We have the south view, east view, and the west view. And again, here are the three criteria to make to make public convenience or necessity. And that concludes my presentation. Available for questions.
Questions for staff. Sal.
Ron, you said it was going to be a grocery store. It's in a more like a convenience store because of the size of the lot.
It's going to be a small grocery store versus just a convenience store. So it's about, it's going to be a 3,000 square foot build, so it will be more of a grocery store versus an actual just convenience store.
The one thing I asked at the initial presentation, and I'd still like that to be a part of the the approval, is that the there'd be signs posted outside that says no loitering.
On the property. After the build, you know, on the property, once it's built, you want those signs posted?
Yeah.
I mean, that's something that that the applicant addressed.
They're nodding their heads. They're nodding their heads.
Do we have any additional questions for staff?
No.
All right, perfect. So let's open it up to the public.
Hi, good morning. My name is Maria Spera, and I'm a planner at Dr. Kushal Land Development Services located at 923 Venice Avenue. I'm here representing Mr. Kushpal Singh for his request of a type 20 ABC license at the subject site. As you know, the project was approved by the Board on September 24th for the grocery store. Mr. Singh proposes to operate the grocery store from 5:00 a.m. to midnight, and alcohol sales will occur from 6:00 a.m. to midnight. We will be posting no loitering signs per the ABC License Department as well as Fresno County standards for that type of signage, and he's going to be operating that store with an excellent track record. He, at the moment, he operates a store within the city of Fresno, and he has had no ABC violations, and he proposes to be operating the same way.
Is other stores at Temperance and Belmont?
Yes, that's correct, on the southwest corner.
Southwest, right. Okay, as long as, you know, I can support it, it's just important to get those signs be a part of of what we're asking for, because it's just a small lot and the size of that for the store.
I will make sure that they are there.
Okay. Well, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Anyone else in the public wishing to comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. We have a motion for approval and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
We now move to item number nine, under Behavioral Health. Approve and authorize Chairman to execute Amendment Number One to Master Agreement Number 23-287 with Mental Health Systems Incorporated and Turning Point of Central California.
Susan, this is exciting. Tell us about this particular item.
Good morning, Chairman Magcig, Supervisors of our Board. I am pleased to be here with you today to ask your support to amend this contract specifically to add the necessary components for Fresno County to implement the CARE Act. So in late 2022, the CARE Act, SB 1338, was signed into law. It's not a new treatment, but it's a new pathway, a new civil court process for persons, a very narrow target population of persons, to access care because they're unable to access care currently. The individuals who would be eligible for the CARE Act services and civil court process are individuals with schizophrenia or schizophrenia spectrum disorders, which includes other disorders such as schizoaffective disorder and limited others. A hallmark feature of schizophrenia is a condition known as anosognosia, which is an unawareness of illness. Physicians estimate about 50% of individuals with schizophrenia have an unawareness that they have an illness. You see this in some other neurological conditions. Sometimes when a person has a stroke, for example, they may not be aware that they have impairments. And it's that lack of awareness that they are ill that often inhibits their ability to accept services. So the CARE Act was introduced to create this new pathway where certain select individuals, such as a family member, first responders who've had repeated interactions with a person, your behavioral health director and designees, and other professionals could file a petition with the court to request the person participate in this new process. If the court determines that they have found prima facie that on its face the petition appears to be valid and can move forward, then the County Department of Behavioral Health and, pending your approval, our partner would engage that individual in services. So this new pathway is required across California. There was one cohort of counties, seven counties initially in the law, who went first to create the new mechanisms and partner with the courts across the state so that we could all benefit from that early learning and then implement by December of 2024. So that's where we are today. We are requesting the amendment to what is considered a master agreement for full service partnership level of care. That's the highest level of outpatient services that we have. And again, this isn't new treatment, but it's the new pathway. And because of the new pathway, there's a variety of components of services that our provider would do. Turn Behavioral Health, Mental Health Systems, is the contractor who has agreed to engage with us in the care process. That includes components such as outreach and engagement, noticing the individual that a petition has been filed, participating in court hearings, writing court reports, and partnering with us in data collection.
Couple of quick questions that I have for you. With the seven counties that were kind of like the test case counties, when they implemented the CARES Act, what percent of the homeless population kind of fell into the category where they could use the CARES Act? Because I've heard some individuals, some elected officials who think that this can be used to take all the homeless off the street, but it's my understanding that we're looking at less than 1%, maybe even one-half of 1% because of the criteria that's laid out in the CARES Act. So you mentioned people who have schizophrenia. One of the criteria, I think, is if if individuals been 51/50 twice in the previous six months, they may qualify. But talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, Supervisor. Excellent question and comments. So prevalence data ranges from approximately 0.3 to 0.75 prevalence. So you're correct, less than 1% of the population is estimated to have a diagnosis of schizophrenia or conditions that would be meeting criteria for a diagnosis of schizophrenia. Many of those individuals with the diagnosis are living independently, they're well engaged on medical care, they are working. Many county employees would have a diagnosis of schizophrenia because it is a treatable condition when a person is able to accept treatment. There is obviously a subset, we wouldn't have the CARE Act if there wasn't a subset of that population of persons with the diagnostic criteria met who didn't need some additional support to get services. Some will be unhoused, but what we're finding is, you know, what we know in behavioral health, that it's not the, it's not nearly a majority of the unhoused population. In fact, very few of the unhoused population will have a diagnosis of schizophrenia or schizophrenia spectrum disorder. So I do think it's very important that we manage expectations. This is not a homelessness program. It's not going to eliminate homelessness. It simply provides a pathway for some individuals with untreated schizophrenia, particularly those with an unawareness of their illness, to have a pathway to engage in our services.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff on this item?
Yes, so Susan, how does that work when, so somebody doesn't know they have schizophrenia, and they've been, they've interacted with your staff or personnel, and we know that there's a situation there, but they don't realize it? And now we, and so we enter this through the court system, and then what happens from there?
So really appreciate that question. The opportunity that the CARE Act presents is a new process of engagement. Because of the petition and the legal proceedings, it's actually the county that is held accountable. And so we really get to engage in a conversation with a person in a different way. We can tell in Some will be unhoused. But what we're finding is, you know, what we know in behavioral health, that it's not the, it's not nearly a majority of the unhoused population. In fact, very few of the unhoused population will have a diagnosis of schizophrenia or schizophrenia spectrum disorder. So I do think it's very important that we manage expectations. This is not a homelessness program. It's not going to eliminate homelessness. It simply provides a pathway for some individuals with untreated schizophrenia, particularly those with an unawareness of their illness, to have a pathway to engage in our services.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff on this item?
Yes, so Susan, how does that work when, so somebody doesn't know they have schizophrenia, and they've been, they've interacted with your staff or personnel, and we know that there's a situation there, but they don't realize it? And now we, and so we enter this through the court system, and then what happens from there?
So really appreciate that question. The opportunity that the CARE Act presents is a new process of engagement. Because of the petition and the legal proceedings, it's actually the county that is held accountable. And so we really get to engage in a conversation with a person in a different way. We can tell an individual, the court ordered me to come and speak with you to see if you might be willing to consider some really cool opportunities that we have for you, rather than saying, you know, someone filed a petition for you to go to court. It's really a new conversation where someone, I could, I could engage the person with a conversation to say, someone cared so much about you that the court ordered me to come talk with you. So the court reviews the petition to determine eligibility. And again, it is very narrow eligibility criteria. We have, we are launching a website that explains all of the information and has links to the state website and the care petition forms, which outline that very clearly. There's also a self-help center. I was remiss in not acknowledging our many partners who have been coming with us this last year and planning for the CARE Act. That includes our judge, the chief executive officer of Superior Court, public defender's office, my team at the public guardians office, multiple team members within the Department of Behavioral Health. Dr. Emma Rasmussen, deputy director, is here with me today. She and another colleague of ours have been going out into the community to conduct trainings and public education. So once that judge determines that the petition is valid, that petition can move forward, then we engage and we do clinical evaluations and assessments, and we partner with, pending your approval, our service provider to do the engagement with the individual. They can agree into services voluntarily, or they can have a plan that is ordered through the court for services. That plan can last up to 12 months. In the event that a little more time is necessary to be engaged with the courts, they can extend that up to one year. And our expectation is that most individuals will continue in our service continuum for some time after that.
Okay, so, so it allows for this new conversation, which you can then have. And if they refuse services at that moment, does the court step in and have somebody enforce some help upon the situation?
So what the court can do is to continue hearings, to allow us to continue to try to engage the individual. But there is no involuntary detainment associated with the CARE Act. The same rules for involuntary detainment due to mental disorder still apply. So if an individual met criteria for dangerous to themselves or to others or grave disability, our care provider or others might pursue that pathway. But the court could not order the person to be involuntary detained. At its core, CARE Act still is a voluntary process. There is a little bit of a compelling approach. So that's the new pathway is through a civil court engagement. One thing I want to say is the courts across the state in Cohort One are really creating a welcoming environment so that it, again, is not intended ever to be perceived as a punitive, but really a supportive approach to engaging a person in services. But it is, there is no involuntary forced treatment nor any forced medication.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Just to clarify that point. So if law enforcement, again, 51/50s someone for a third time, they choose to engage with the county, bring in the courts using the CARE Act, the courts can extend the involuntary stay that potentially that is gonna stay place beyond the 48-hour hold that may happen.
So the court would not have any authority to extend an involuntary detainment even if the person was brought into a 51/50 designated facility? That clock still runs its legal course. The judge can order our department to do the evaluation. We can continue the hearings to continue to try to engage. So we don't, we don't let go. We stay connected with that person, but they cannot force the person involuntarily to stay in a facility unless they meet that 51/50, 52/50, et cetera, legal process.
So if a doctor makes that determination, they can be held longer then. But the care process is still a part of that. So the courts aren't gonna order it, a doctor might. And the care process engages the county more and makes us responsible, correct?
Correct, yes.
So civil liberties, I believe, can be taken. And while the courts might not be seen as the mechanism there, the doctors that are involved in the process can.
Under the LPS Act, so under the existing 51/50 process and the subsequent holdings that can happen if the doctor determines the person needs to stay longer than that 72 hours. That still happens, but it's not ordered by the judge. So the judge orders the engagement, the judge orders us to do the engagement, to do the clinical evaluation, and orders hearings, there's case management hearings, for the person to participate in this new pathway. It's a civil process. But the judge cannot order the person to be confined, nor can they order the person to take medication. They can order that medication stabilization as ordered by a physician be part of the care plan, but the care plan team could not force the person to adhere to that medication.
Thank you. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public portion and bring it back to the board. With this, I think this is a requirement of the state of California. I think all counties have to implement their care plan by the first of the year. And so I think it is good that we waited to watch seven other counties begin to implement this. This is not something that's gonna solve all the problems that we have here in Fresno County, but it does, it's, it does provide some other mechanisms for the county to be more involved in the process. I don't believe there's a whole lot of additional money that's being made available. We're having to figure out how to pay for this pretty much on our own. But my hope is that there will be the handful of people who qualify being able to get the services that they need. So with that, I'll move for staff's recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion as second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And that passes unanimously. Thank you.
We move on to item number 9.1 under Behavioral Health. Make the finding that is in the best interest of the county to waive the provision of Administrative Policy 27 that requires grant applications to be reviewed and approved by the board before submitting the funding agency.
Susan, you're back.
I am back, Chairman. Thank you, members of the board, Chairman Magcig, for considering our resolution. We are excited on behalf of Fresno County to pursue three separate bond behavioral health continuum infrastructure program applications. That's a bit of a mouthful. We have a wonderful opportunity to pursue funding for our county to create three new facilities. One of those, the largest grant application, is for the Olive Campus. We spoke at a recent board meeting about consolidating our outpatient services at the Olive Campus. It's an innovative approach using a primary care model. We are excited about the location being close to freeway access. It will have our urgent care wellness center for adults and our youth wellness center for young folks, where they can have same-day access. They can have appointments, or they can drop in without an appointment to receive an assessment and linkage to treatment services. We're really pleased to have this upstream approach to make sure that folks can get access quickly. We have, that, that grant application would be $47 million. We have another grant application for $10 million for a new type of licensed facility. There are interim regulations. That's how new this facility is. They are still finalizing the regulations. It's called a psychiatric residential treatment facility. This is an alternative to traditional inpatient hospitalization for young people. Again, we really want to make sure that we're creating intensive care environments for our young folks so that we can prevent the unfortunate effects of untreated or undertreated mental illness. And then the third application is another application for $10 million to create a psychiatric health facility. Our board will recall that we are implementing the expansion of grave disability criteria associated with SB 43 in January of '26, like most of California. And that expansion of criteria allows a person to be detained under a 51/50 application for severe standalone substance use disorder. So for the first time in California's history, that population would be eligible for that involuntary detainment. But prior to a recent bill that was signed by the governor, there was no facility type really identified in our continuum that we could hold a person in. So just at the end of the legislative cycle, the governor signed the bill that allows a psychiatric health facility, pending some additional regulations, to stand as that treatment facility for standalone substance use disorder or co-occurring substance use disorder and mental health. We are hopeful to have the grant awarded, assuming you pass our resolution this morning. That would allow us to do the construction so that we may have a puff to meet the population of expansion under SB 43. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions I have here real quick on this. So again, Prop 1 funds going after a portion of that. I want to say, just going from memory, when Prop 1 passed, we, we're losing about $7 million a year roughly from the MSHA allotment that was coming to us before. And so I think it is good that we're going after more than our fair share of this first round of funding, and there's gonna be some additional rounds out there as well. One thing that really struck me about the $67 million that we're going after is new beds that are being created. Don't, there's not a whole lot of new beds, but what this application really is heavy on is, I think, prevention. And so a lot of people forget, and maybe you can talk a little bit about the importance of prevention, how many phone calls your office receives each year from people who need mental health services? How you intervene to try to keep people from becoming homeless? I think that is important. And with the $67 million, how much prevention is a part of that?
Absolutely. We, we are requesting funding for 36 treatment beds, which would be a significant increase in our community. For example, right now, we have 16 beds for youth that the county operates with a partner organization. And then we have another 16-bed psychiatric health facility for adults. And so adding in the additional psychiatric health facility in PRTF is a substantial increase to the county's beds. And as you're describing, we strongly believe that expanding the treatment continuum and making accessible same-day services for our community prevents the unnecessary suffering of individuals in the community. We want to provide immediate access, assess which levels of care a person needs, and make sure that they're able to receive those upstream so that we don't need the beds downstream. This is a research-driven approach, and we are pleased to partner with other communities and make these regional assets as well. We have other Central Valley counties that have limited access, and we believe that as a large county, we are able to leverage the strengths of our resources in order to make these regional assets.
Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and bring it back to the board for action. Is there a motion for approval?
Mr. Chairman, I would make that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion as second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We now move to item number 10 under Public Works and Planning. Consider petition for parcel cancellation of agricultural land conservation contract number 2068, followed by Next Era Energy Resources on behalf of Michael Dreszek, trustee of Andreszek Family Trust, to remove a 160-acre parcel from Williamson Act contract to establish a battery energy storage facility.
Excuse me. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Alexander Preitzer, planner with the Department of Public Works and Planning. This item comes to your board with a recommendation for denial from the Agricultural Land Conservation Committee at its May 8, 2024, meeting, based on the committee's inability to make finding number two. I have nothing further to add regarding this item unless you have any questions. Additionally, the applicant and their representative are here for questions as well.
Appreciate that excellent presentation, and I think the item kind of speaks for itself. There's findings of fact that we need to make. This is in Supervisor Buddy Mendez's district. Buddy, you have any comments you'd like to make before we go out to the public?
No.
All right. Any other member wishing to comment? All right. I know we've got a few people here who want to speak on this, so I'm gonna open up the public portion before we act on this item.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Andrew Hayman. I'm the lead developer for Key Energy Storage, the battery storage project, applying for Williamson Act cancellation. And I do have a applicant presentation ready if it would be helpful for the board to find the findings recommended or needed for cancellation. But I just would like to say, for finding number two specifically, since the ALCC board, the EIR, the environmental impact report for this project, has been approved by the Planning Commission last month, and in that EIR, the finding two was looked at in depth, and the finding from the EIR was that, quote, "The proposed use would not result in the significant removal of adjacent contracted land from agricultural or open space use." With that, happy to answer any questions, or I can go through applicant presentation if you'd like to.
Appreciate the option, but I don't know that we're gonna need the full-blown presentation. I think what it really comes down to, that you alluded to, is being able to make finding number two. And our ag commission wasn't able to do that. But if we're able to do that, then I think we're good to go. Any questions on finding two? All right. And you've just stated you don't believe it, it will cause more surrounding ag lands. And, you know, I'm, as I look at it, I've not seen any compelling information that leads me to believe that simply because your project is going in, that it's gonna encourage other projects to come out of ag use. You know, it's, it's an interesting argument, but to me, there's no facts that really justify that. So thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the public wishing to comment on this item?
Good morning, Chairman Magcig, fellow board members. My name's Ronnie Young. I'm the Business Manager, Financial Secretary of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. We represent in between 1,400 to 1,500 electrical workers in Fresno, Madera, Kings, and Tulare Counties. Over the last 10 years, we have done multiple renewable energy projects, including battery storage. And there's just a ton of benefits that these projects create. One, I sit on the Kings County Workforce Investment Board, and we had a couple of projects a couple of years ago that utilized battery storage in Kings County. So for the WIB Director Lance Lippincott, I started keeping track of the local hire component for these projects. And for the, one was the Aquamarine Project, where 42% of the electrical workers for that project were from Kings County. And on the Slate Project, 43% of the electrical workers were from Kings County. And if you take the total local hire component of Fresno, Madera, Kings, and Tulare Counties, over 90% on each project were from those counties. So huge benefit to, like I said, the local hire residents from our area. And some of these benefits, you know, you look at living wages for the electrical workers that provide health care. Like I said, living wage and a pension opportunity. But probably the biggest benefit is the apprenticeship opportunity, where you can take an individual that has no idea what they want to be. They can decide, hey, I want to give the electrical industry a shot. And these projects, like the Keys Battery Storage, gives them an opportunity to get into our apprenticeship program and learn a trade over five years. So after five years, they can be a state-certified electrical journeyman, be able to provide for their families with health care and pension. And not to mention the economic benefits for the local economy in those areas. So just, those are just a few things to think about. I myself would appreciate your support, and the 1,400 to 1,500 members of Local 100 would appreciate your support as well. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. My name is Ben Harold. I'm a Director of Business Development for Cupertino Electric. I'm here representing Cupertino Electric in our support of the Key Best Project. We've been selected as the general contractor for the first phase. We've been in business for over 70 years. We are a union engineering and construction firm based here in California. The Key Best Project has a project labor agreement executed in place. That's our avenue to hiring local union workforce to build the project. We're gonna be hiring electricians, laborers, operators, ironworkers to build this project. Cupertino Electric, we've been building in California since 2008 renewable projects here in California, up and down the state. We've got millions of man-hours building projects like this in communities like this. We really strive to be a part of the community, to also be stewards of the community. We look forward to partnering with Next Era, partnering with your local union workforce and with this community on this project if approved. Thank you.
Quick question for you. The, is a separate CCA out there gonna be the beneficiary of this project? Is a separate CCA out there going to be the beneficiary of this project? A community choice aggregator? Or is this going to be going to a utility company?
Andrew, who's the PPA with?
I get into it. Yeah, the energy from the project is sold to two other CCAs here. We offered it to PG&E, the local utility, and they were not on the market at the time.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Maxick and Board of Supervisors. Will Oliver with the Fresno County Economic Development Corporation. We're here in support of Next Era's Key Energy Battery Storage Project. We've worked with the company for a handful of years now. Certainly, there's going to be a lot of opportunities in terms of local construction impacts, but have also been engaged here in Fresno County, working with our organization and other stakeholders to see where they could also make investments in additional training pathways, such as pre-apprenticeship programs, some of which that we help fund and oversee. So I think this is an exciting project to bring to Fresno County. I think it's key to, you know, storing and deploying clean energy in the most effective way possible, and we trust that Next Era will be a long-term partner and thought leader alongside the EDC and the County of Fresno as we look at other, you know, projects in the renewable energy sector. So we support Next Era and appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Gorman Chairman Mazick, members of the board, John Dressick, Dressick Farms, we're the primary landowner of the project. I just wanted to let you know that from our standpoint, working with Next Era, the arrangements that we've been able to create maintains the.
I want to ask you a question before, I'm kind of getting tired of this on-and-on crap here. You don't have any water to irrigate that anyway, to farm it. Not enough.
It's Wesley's Water District, so it's a challenged water area, so.
Right. I'm a member of Wesley's too. You obviously don't. I mean, I don't know where in the hell this finding came from. So, hey, I'm on your side there.
I support it. I mean, it's, being in a challenged water district, you have a finite supply. We farmed in Wesley's since 1974, so we're 50 years going. The most important asset we have is water, and how we manage that and how we manage the infrastructure is critical. And all I'm here to say is with the partnership with Next Era, the arrangement on Section 401, which is the northwest corridor section of.
Right, you needed a set aside ground.
We need a set aside. But they're also allowing us to utilize the infrastructure on the property.
Correct.
The deep well on the property, which we can move to other operations so that we can be farmers first and foremost. We're not developers, we're farmers.
Correct.
So, thank you.
You're preaching to the choir here.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
All right. Seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close the public portion. And I just want to note for the board, if we are able to make that second finding, there is an additional item that needs to be included in the motion for staff's recommendation, and that is that the applicant shall pay the cancellation fee in an amount of $1,978,000 as determined by the county assessor and certified by the Board of Supervisors for issuance of a certificate of cancellation by the board. So I just want to note for the record that if we're able to make that second finding, and it sounds like several of us can.
Yeah.
That needs to be included with staff's recommendation for the project.
Which all that money goes to the state, not the county. Everybody needs to know that.
Any additional comments from the board? All right, Buddy.
I think we can make the second finding. I can't see why we can't. I, I don't know. I think we need to look at our procedures and why this was rejected by the committee. Because obviously, that's either, it's going to eventually go native, a lot of that ground anyway, of how the water situation is. So we need, that needs to be looked at. So we can make that finding, and obviously, we need to, I think you stated it well.
And you're adding the condition that's on page two of the agenda item that.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct. So I'll make the motion to.
And I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second, and the direction back to staff is to maybe take a look and see if we can change the policies and procedures as it relates to the ag committee since Sigma is changing how we operate significantly, or how farmers have to operate.
That's very good, Nathan.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And that passes unanimously.
And thank you for coming. I mean, I'm sorry you guys had to come up here.
We now move to item number 11, under Public Works and Planning. Adopt plans and specifications for contract 24-03-C Elkhorn Recharge Facility, contract 24-03-C, reject an incomplete bid from West Coast Metal Smith LLC as non-responsive. Here, I consider bid protests from apparent second-low bidder Woods Bros. Incorporated, 1414718th Avenue, Lamore, regarding proposed award of contract 24-03-C.
So Aaron, I know on this particular item, there's been some changes and change-backs, so I'm curious to see what staff's recommendation is, and I'm going to be leaning on counsel to make sure that our procedures and how we operate is 100% defensible, so the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Erin Higginson for Public Works and Planning. This item is to adopt the plans and specifications for the project, hold a protest hearing, and award the contract based on the results of the hearing. After the agendas for this meeting were originally prepared, more developments have occurred. First, right now, Bernice is handing you a letter from October 23rd from the protester, the apparent second-low bidder Wood Brothers. And there is also a letter you were provided yesterday from the apparent low bidder J&amp;G Heavy, which explains they received their Class A license yesterday. And the background that I needed to put in hearing for this context, for the, put the hearing in context. So according to the section 3-1.04B award period of the project specifications, we have only 54 days to award the project. The bids are only good for 54 days. So since there's only one board hearing this month, that's why we didn't give more time to this item, right? So you're seeing some things a little rushed, giving you additional documentation at the end, but that's the reason. We're trying to meet that 54-day calendar period for the bids to be good. Second, the question of licensing. So spelled out in the notes to bidders, we tell all the bidders what type of license you have to have for this project. So the type of license, we said you could either have a Class A, general engineering, or a C-12, which is earthwork and paving. The reason we said C-12 would be okay is that a prime contractor has to perform at least 30% of the work. So since a big portion of this work is earthwork and paving, we said you could be either one, but you would have to, it's implied, you have to subcontract any work you don't have the proper license for. So, and then, this is also in our specifications. It's section 31-06. For a federal aid contract, and this is federal because it's ARPA-funded, the contractor must be properly licensed as a contractor from contract award through contract acceptance. So basically, normally, typically, people do have the license at the time we have the bid opening. However, because it's federally funded, we, the award is when you have to have the proper license for the project. Okay. So then, we had a bid opening Tuesday, October 8th, and our staff performed routine bid checks to check the licensing and registration. So all contractors have to be registered with the Department of Industrial Relations, including subcontractors. Now, both letters from both bidders talked about different errors in the department, what we call the DIR registration number. But the law about DIR specifically says that any, that you shouldn't reject a bid if the error can be corrected within 24 hours. Now, typically, our staff just looks up the name, contractor name on the website, and finds the correct number, so we don't reject bids on that basis unless we couldn't find the number. So in both sides, I brought up issues regarding that, but we, this happens a lot of times on all bids, they're very long numbers, and we don't see that as any issue on either side of any of the DIR registration numbers. And the law states that an inadvertent error in the listing of the California Contractor License or Public Works Contractor Registration Number shall not be grounds for filing a bid protest or considering the bid were non-responsive if the corrected license number is submitted to the public entity within 24 hours after the bid opening, and the number corresponds with the name and location. Okay. So that's clearing up that. So two letters, you received the first two letters with the agenda, which was the initial protest and the initial response. And so I went over that issue about DIR. And then meanwhile, we also reached out to and were able to hear back from the Contractor State License Board, and they did confirm that the structural work on the project does require a Class A license. So, and then we got the, I just gave you the letter from October 23rd, and with different, where Wood Bros. say that J&amp;G is not qualified to perform the specialty pipe and structural work, and then did not list subcontractors. And they said there would be an unfair bidding advantage. And then yesterday, they told you, we have, you received a letter November 4th, that J&amp;G Heavy did also receive their Class A license. So they now have a C-12 and a Class A license. So in light of all these events, which are a little bit complicated, the department doesn't see an award or, doesn't see an impediment to awarding to the apparent low bidder J&amp;G Heavy, as they now have obtained all the correct licensure, there doesn't seem to be any subcontractors missing. And they did list the percentages and dollar amounts of their subcontractors, and the DIR issue is not an issue as far as the department is concerned. And there's, so there was also an allegation, one of the letters, about using independent contractors inappropriately by the low bidder, but that, we would consider that an unsubstantiated allegation. We do have our labor compliance person here, and we do labor compliance monitoring during the contract, and that is how we would address any issues on that basis. We feel that we have measures in place to protect, to protect from those issues. And again, if any subcontractors were, this is kind of in the initial draft of the item, if any subcontractors are inappropriately added after the fact, we bring an item back to your board, and we say, hey, they needed to subcontract that this work they didn't originally intend to, and you, the board, can impose a 10% penalty on the cost of that subcontractor, or up to a 10% penalty. So this concludes my part of the remarks, and I, we can, if you have any questions for me now, or we can proceed with the bid protest hearing, I believe the bidders are here too.
Board members, do you have any clarifying questions?
No, I'm more confused.
That's all right. We'll get through it together. All right. So why don't we begin with the bid protest hearing? So let's begin with the script.
Okay. So we'll now commence with the bid protest hearing. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the following orders proposed for the agenda item. The board will first consider recommended action number one, adopting the plans and specifications, and recommended action number two, rejecting an incomplete bid. The board will then proceed with recommended action number three, commencement of the protest hearing. At the conclusion of the hearing, and based upon your board's consideration of the bid protest, your board may approve the recommended actions to find that J&amp;G Heavy Hall's bid is responsive, or your board may instead determine that J&amp;G Heavy Hall's bid is non-responsive, and uphold Wood Brothers' protest, and find that J&amp;G Heavy Hall bid to be non-responsive, and award to the next lowest bidder, Wood Bros. The final alternative available to your board is to reject all bids and rebid the project. At the conclusion of the protest hearing, the board will then take such action as it deems appropriate on recommended actions three through five. And then I have in here, is there a consensus to proceed in this manner?
So, yes, there's consensus, but a question I have. Do I need to open up the public portion again, since we're going to be making a motion on number one and number two? Number one is adopting the plans and specifications. Number two is rejecting an incomplete bid, which isn't a part of any potential protest that may come up.
That is correct. You make the first two motions and then go to the hearing on the protest.
So we don't need to open up the public portion about items one and two before we vote, then?
That's correct.
All right. Excellent. So is there a motion to approve item number one first? We have a motion, is there a second? Plans and specifications. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That passes unanimously. And is there a motion for action number two, which is rejecting an incomplete bid? I'll make that motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That passes. All right. Staff, back to you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the protest hearing, the board will first hear from Wood Bros. and then from J&amp;G Heavy Hall. If Wood Bros. would like to make any rebuttal, it may do so, and if J&amp;G would like to make any rebuttal, it may do so. At this point, the board will hear from any members of the public regarding recommended action number three. Then, once the board has heard from the bidders in the public, the chairman will close the hearing, so the board may deliberate and decide on recommended actions three through five.
I am opening the bid protest hearing for 24-03-C, the Elkhorn Recharge Facility. Is there a representative here from Wood Bros. who would like to speak regarding its bid protest? Now is your time.
Wood Bros.
I'm reading from a script. So if you want me to call you Wood Brothers, happy to do it. It says Wood Bros. in my script.
Either way, we answer to both.
All right. That's all I need to, all I need to know. The floor is yours.
Bro, yeah. My name is Mike Sheffield. I'm the project manager and a estimator for Wood Brothers. And I've worked in the pipeline and underground structure business for over 45 years. Wood Brothers has been in business for 40 years and has constructed at least 100 projects similar to this one during that time, both public and private. I first encountered G&amp;J hauling in the early 2000s in the Chico-Meridgeville area, and later worked with them extensively at the LA landfill near Irvine, Bowerman Landfill's the name of the job. Have seen their trucks all over the valley. All work done by G&amp;J that I am aware of has been trucking. Found out yesterday that J&amp;G has an A license, which by definition allows them to construct fixed works requiring specialized engineering knowledge and skill, and lists irrigation, drainage, and water supply as examples. And that infers, as far as I'm concerned, it infers that an A license displays a level of experience within these works. It also lists hydroelectric projects, harbors, docks, wharves, refineries, chemical plants, power plants, and meteorological plants. While I mean, while I am not saying that the skill to construct these projects is part of the acquiring the A license, I am saying that experience in such types of work must accompany the license. G&amp;J has listed no subs for this pipeline, for the pipeline portion or the concrete portion of work, and therefore is self-performing the work. The pipework, especially the double-pipe installation across Elkhorn Avenue, requires coordination of traffic control, demo of existing asphalt, avoiding existing utilities, excavation of trench to an accurate grade, laying pipe, ensuring the trench for protection of the workers, and providing an eight-inch pad to set the pipe on. After the pipe is placed, a cement slurry is poured around the pipe to the spring line, which is the middle of the pipe. Have to be careful to make sure you don't shift the pipe or float the pipe, which is All this while maintaining safe flow of traffic and safe work, and a safe work area. The concrete work is involving another skill set and a different experience level. G&amp;G has listed a rebar sub to tie the reinforcement bars, but still needs to form brace and pour the structures as shown on the plans and described in the specs. This includes a cutoff wall up 15 feet deep, retaining walls, turnout box, and canal lining. A knowledge of formwork, water stops, bond breakers, and cures are all required. This work, while out of the pavement area, is still to be monitored as a safe work area. In conclusion, G&amp;J must display a level of experience to staff to perform this work, not only with key employees, but with past experience of, past performance. If they are not able to do so, then this job should be awarded to Wood Brothers, the lowest responsible bidder. Any questions?
So a question on that pipeline work. So a question on that pipeline work. Um, uh, if it's less than one-half of 1%, they don't need to list, um, the sub, correct?
That's correct.
And is it possible that the pipeline work is going to be less than one-half of 1% of the total bid?
No.
Okay.
Same with the pipeline work, I mean, the concrete work.
And, uh, based upon specifications that were put out in this bid, was there anything, uh, in the specifications from the county that you believe would disqualify, um, the low bidder that's before us today? Other than the things that you've just stated, is, was there anything in there that should have disqualified them?
Initially, initially, I thought when they didn't list an A license, I found out about that yesterday, they weren't qualified to bid the project without having, uh, C, C license holders in pipeline and, and, uh, concrete, it was specialty licenses, which weren't listed in there too, but the fact that he's, has a A license now makes him eligible for that, to work.
Thank you for your comments. Any other questions for the, uh, this individual? All right. Thank you. Uh, is there a representative here from GJ Heavy Hall who would like to speak in response to the bid protest?
Good morning, board members. Uh, my name is Jesse Archer, I'm the owner of G and J Heavy Hall. Regarding the statements just made by Mike, um, there were no specific, uh, requirements for, um, or qualifications in the bid documents for providing work experience, um, as a condition of having a responsive bid. Um, but I would like to, uh, offer you why I think I am experienced. Um, we've just completed a, uh, $36 million, um, subcontract on the Frank Kern Canal in Porterville, uh, we've been there for the last three years. Uh, my company moved 4 million yards of embankment to build a new canal. Uh, we fine graded for 10 miles of concrete lined canal. As part of that project, we also, um, excavated and fine graded for, um, nine different, um, concrete siphons where the canal went under an existing county road, which included traffic control, demolition of a road, grading the, uh, excavating the whole grading, um, all the angles for the head walls and the siphon box, um, and then backfilling and replacing the road. Um, this type of work is exactly what's required by the Elkhorn job, but on a much smaller scale. Um, I would also like to introduce my associate, Paul Garcia, he was the project manager for the prime contractor on the Frank Kern Canal. Uh, he's recently come to work for me, and, um, it would be his, uh, management and his experience, coupled with our grading experience and, uh, the experience that we gained, uh, working with the cement crews and the concrete lining crews, um, on the Frank Kern Canal is one example that I think qualifies us to build this job. Anything to add?
Uh, sure. A question I have before your associate speaks. So again, to get that A license, which you just, uh, we got confirmation of yesterday that you've received that, you don't just pay a fee, I mean, you've got, there's tests that are involved, you have to have, I believe, someone vouch for you, I don't know which, you may be the one that actually holds the license, or someone who works with you that qualifies you, but, uh, to get that A license, uh, even if you have an RMO, that Responsible Managing Officer that's part of your team, there's a process, which sometimes can take many months, working with a Contractor State License Board, so, um, I assume this is something you've been working on for a while, and you were confident that you would have the A license before the contract was awarded, is that correct?
That, that is correct. We, um, so I passed, I personally passed the CSLB test in September, um, and that application was submitted under a company I'm starting called Archersiliconstruction. Um, we, uh, uh, you can only have one application before CSLB at a time, so as soon as the Archer Civil license was active, we submitted the G and J Heavy Hall, um, application, which was approved yesterday.
All right, that's, that's enough.
So, so you weren't the prime contractor on the Frank Kern Canal?
No, I wasn't.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, no, I was a subcontractor to Brosmer Wall Tudor Perini, uh, joint venture.
Who was the prime contractor?
Uh, Brosmer Wall Incorporated, Tudor Perini Joint Venture, yeah.
So, so my, my name's Paul Garcia, um, and I was a project manager for Brosmer Wall, um, I worked for Bob Brosmer for, um, since 2012, and, um, been project manager, uh, on many of his projects. And, uh, so anyway, I was project manager on the $200 million, um, Frank Kern Canal that we just completed, and we had ribbon cutting in July. And, uh, I met Jesse Archer, um, through that job, um, he was an earthwork, uh, subcontractor, he did structural excavation, the structural backfill for the job, and I built all the siphons, um, for that job, um, probably the largest, some of the largest structures that have, um, been built, uh, in the state in a while. And a, um, so, you know, I'm, I, I'm, I'm not a registered civil engineer, but I'm a trained civil engineer, um, and so, a trained structural engineer, and so I'm completely familiar with the work, and, um, I've actually passed, I passed the contractors, Contractor A license myself, um, just recently. But anyway, I'm excited to work for, for, come to work for Jesse, I grew up here in Fresno County in Huron, and, um, you know, just excited to, to get back to work.
All right, thank you. So, um, seeing no additional questions we have for you, next step is, if Wood Brothers or Bros would like to make any rebuttal to GJ Heavy Hall, they may do so at this time. Are there any rebuttal comments?
Yes, my, my only con, uh, comment is, G and J has no company experience laying pipe or, or, uh, concrete, and these aren't easy pipe laying, concrete jobs. They're involved in a, in a location where you're out in traffic for a portion of the job, uh, you've got a multiple day operation of open trench in the right of way that has to be maintained, and, and, uh, a specific, uh, order of, 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 uh, events to, to produce the job. And I, I don't see any experience, except for his new superintendent, uh, with any of this. Jesse's mentioned how much time and, and money he made grading for the project, but that still doesn't involve the work with the concrete and laying pipe, and that's, that's Wood Brothers' contention.
Thank you. If GJ Heavy Hall would like to speak to make any rebuttal to Wood Brothers, uh, they may do so at this time.
I was specifically involved, uh, with a protest for Bob Brosmer on a, um, on a, on an airport job that Bob had started with a, uh, a new company, and because it was federally funded, uh, the case precedent was that experience lies with the staff, and so, uh, that would be my point. Um, it's, it's, in, in that scenario, the company, um, or the, the experience or the project experience lies with the staff.
I'd also like to add that, um, I think we've demonstrated that we are qualified, but I don't think that qualification was a requirement of the bid documents. Um, I, I think the qualification was that we had a C-12 license to bid the project. Um, we have the A license, which allows us to build every facet of the project, and we have the option to bring in multiple subcontractors if need be, to build small portions of the work for less than one-half of 1%. So we see no, uh, unresponsiveness.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on the bid protest? Seeing none, do any members of the board now wish to address the bid protest or direct any questions to either of the bidders', representatives, or to staff? Any, any members have any additional questions that we have?
Can I ask staff a question?
Absolutely, that's, that's what this is for. You want to talk to Dan?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, buddy.
Is that unusual to bid on a contract and not actually have the right, uh, deals in place?
Not tremendously, there's actually a provision in the public contract code that, you know, says you can't reject the bid, but, uh, you don't have to award it if they don't have it. It's, it's not usual, most of us will have it upfront, you see situations like this in a dynamic where a contractor is in the process of expanding their business and getting into other areas where, hopefully not the day before you award the contract, but...
Right, and then we're on a, on a time deal, because we don't make a decision today, we have to rebid it.
Unless, uh, you, uh, if the two, um, uh, contractors wanted to extend their bids, but their bids expire before the board meets again, so that your options today, unless you get cooperation from the two bidders to hold their bids open as they exist for the board to consider further.
And then we just found out, was it today or yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yeah. Cause it was kind of a fait accompli before that.
Correct.
Yeah.
If you didn't have the license, you know, the protest would have more teeth.
Just to add a little bit more, um, not complication hopefully, but when the RFP went out to bid on it, you needed it C-12 to be the prime, and they had a C-12, the issue was they didn't have an A, um, and the bidders that they listed didn't have that A, because there, uh, was some engineering work necessary, the A license, uh, was necessary, they went out and got the A license, no contract's been awarded, so nothing's been violated, correct?
That is correct.
All right, just wanted to make that clear. Question I have for you, Dan, and also for public work staff, real simple question, but it needs to, I need to ask it, and you need to answer, we'll, we'll start with Aaron. Did GJ Heavy Hall meet the requirements of the bid documents that were originally submitted?
They do now.
No, didn't.
Did they?
They did not.
Well, they did, uh, because it says you have to have a license at time of reward.
Technically, they did not.
Did, when you submitted the bid documents originally, did it say that you had to have a C-12 and an A, or just a C-12 to bid?
Just a C-12.
They did, that wasn't a factor in there.
So they did. They did meet as a prime contractor, the sub, it was a subcontracting issue, which has come up over the years. This is not the first issue with subcontractors not being listed, or being listed twice, there's been matters before the Board of Supervisors over, say, the past 15 years of this issue coming up. Um, and typically, the board has, um, decided that there's a, there, so typically, the contract has been awarded anyway.
All right, Dan, perfect. So Dan, second question, um, based upon your office, uh, researching this, since we have an appeal here, uh, if we move forward with GJ Heavy Hall, uh, do you feel that that is a defensible course of action, and an appropriate course of action based upon the facts that have been presented today? Is there anything that you believe that's been presented today that would disqualify GJ Heavy Hall, uh, from being able to be awarded this contract?
I do not, I believe that staff has indicated that they've met the requirements to be a responsive bidder. Under the public contracting code, the county needs to select the lowest, uh, possible bidder unless it has grounds to, uh, find differently. The board has to make that factual decision, if the board is satisfied with that, I do not see any problem with moving forward with G and J as the, uh, prime, uh, as the awarded bidder.
Yes, Brian, please.
Mr. Chairman, in listening to the discussion today, I am not familiar with either of these two contractors, so only have my knowledge that was based today. And for me, it seems Woods clearly has the experience and history to do the job. However, G and J met all the qualifications, um, to me, it seems they were saved yesterday by getting that Class A. Had they not had that, then I would have been inclined to default them and go to Woods. However, since, um, timing is on their side, they have it all, and the company, while they don't have the experience, it seems to me, the owner of the company went out and hired the experience to get it done. So based on that, I believe, and from my point of view, um, whether they have the experience or not, and I would hope that our council has put conditions in the contract, if they fail to meet the specifications of the job, that we would have recourse against them. But it seems to me, G and J have met all the requirements and are the low bidder, which we have an obligation to do unless there's compelling evidence, and to me, today, I do not see any compelling evidence for Woods, although I would state, Woods clearly has the experience and the capacity to do the job, but they were not the low bidder in the job. So I think we don't have a choice, other than to go to G and J and work with our staff, and Hope County has written a good enough contract, if they don't perform, we will have recourse against them, is my opinion of this matter.
Excellent. Any other comments from board members?
Just one, one other thing, um, G and J didn't do the cement work Brosmer did on that project, correct? Okay.
All right, so, seeing no further comments up here, I need to read from my script, which I hope is technically correct, since we no longer, as a board, have any additional questions, at this time, I'm now closing the protest hearing. So now we're going to be moving on to actions three through five, which is to consider the protest and contract, and award con, uh, contract. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on the item of the, uh, award? Seeing none, I'm gonna, uh, close that, uh, public portion on the award. Do any members of the board now wish to address this item? So again, this is, these are items three through five, and I want to note that I think yesterday, staff changed its recommendation for item five. Aaron, can you just talk about, um, what staff's recommendation is officially?
Yes, uh, staff's official recommendation is to award to the low bidder, and the reason...
Which is G and J, correct?
G and J, yes, the reason our recommendation changed is during the course of investigating the bid protest, that we got clarification from Contractor State License Board, that they should not perform the, uh, structure and pipe work without a Class A, and so, but then when they...
Which they attained as of yesterday.
So then we changed...
So had our meeting been last week, they would have been out the door, and Woods would have been the contractor.
We would be recommending Wood Bros...
Yeah, timing is everything.
Yes.
And they got lucky.
Totally agree with that.
Yeah, so, I would agree with staff's recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so, um, items, uh, three, four, and five, do we need to make any modifications, or, uh, are we able to make a motion for items three, four, and five, recognizing that staff is recommending G and J as the lowest responsive bid? Dan?
Yes, I, I think the motion is to reject the appeal of Woods Brothers, um, to designate G and J as the lowest responsible bid, uh, award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder, and authorize the chairman to execute the contract change orders as described in item five.
All right, is there a motion?
And revised agenda item five.
And revised agenda item five, fair enough, is there a motion to that effect?
So move.
We have a motion.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second, seeing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposition that carries unanimously? Thank you for being here today on that item.
Thank you, and, and also, we do have, uh, construction management, and we have a consultant from Provost and Pritchard, Kevin Johansson, he'll be involved in the, uh, construction management team, he was part of the design team, and we do have payment and performance bonds, and, and we do have a robust system to monitor contracts during construction.
All right, very good, thank you.
We now move to item number 12, under Board of Supervisors committee reports and comments.
That deal's over. See, I, I don't like this crap where, you know, we get to, don't get this information until the last minute.
Yeah, that, that, uh, was a bit of a surprise, uh, to me too, we'll take a look at the bidding procedures and, and look at that, we do have the complication... We do have the complication of the public contract code provision, but we'll take a look at that. This should be something that we ought to be able to set up. I think it was the combination of the timing versus the meeting time, you know, and the opening of the bids as well that created the crunch.
And I'll explain more in closed session, why.
So comments, we're going to start with Supervisor Pacheco, do you have anything? Supervisor Quintero, do you have anything?
No.
Item 12. Supervisor Mendez, you got a loss for words, anything you'd like to share with us?
I'll be glad when today's over.
Amen to that. Yeah. Yeah. Brando, do you have anything?
And we're not even on the ballot Supervisor Mendez, yeah, imagine what them guys are feeling, yeah.
Well, I've got a few comments, it'll be quick. So vote, vote, vote. I guess that means vote three times. Today's the last day to cast your ballot. Go to any vote center or drop off box. Both will remain open till closing time at 8:00 PM. Don't wait till 8:00 PM, please. If you're mailing your ballot, it must be postmarked no later than today, which is election day. So also, I want to remind everyone that November 11th is Veterans Day, and the Veterans Day Parade will be taking place at 11:11 AM in downtown Fresno on November 11th. So if you haven't been to our Veterans Day Parade, it's pretty spectacular. I would encourage you to get out there and enjoy the celebration. And to my colleagues, I want to tell you both, I appreciate you, I wish you well this evening, and we'll see what the voters have in store for us. So with that, let's move on to the next item.
Board appointments, item 13.
Board appointments.
I don't have any.
I've got one.
Okay.
Appoint Brian Arcero to the Planning Commission. Says here, position D. That's a, cool, is the guy, I can't think, I can't pronounce his Sikh name. He would be taking his place who has been, he's, he's been on and already served two terms, so I needed to get a replacement.
Okay.
Terms O, it goes O, O-1, O-4, 2027.
All right, very good. Supervisor Quintero?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to appoint Laura Martina to the Zoo Authority, and that's the only appointment I have.
Excellent.
And Mr. Chairman, I would like to reappoint Stanley, Stanley Bula to the Fresno County Fire Protection District for position E to expire September 30th, 2028. It's a reappointment.
Excellent, thank you for that. And I want to, to the Dunlap Cemetery District, ladies and gentlemen.
All right.
Appoint Connie Work to the vacant District Five seat formerly held by Rick Hall, which expires on 1/3/2028. And I want to share with all of you, I've got a community meeting out in Dunlap, which is going to take place the end of November. We need two more, we need two more board members to keep that, that district alive, but I really appreciate what staff's done, and hopefully we'll be able to drum up the support needed to keep that district rolling forward.
We need to, we appreciate Connie.
Yes, we need to send her some flowers. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on these appointments? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, entertain a motion for approval of the appointments.
Some would.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
We now move to item number 14, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons, as I intend to address the board on any matter not on this agenda.
Anyone here wishing to comment on any items not on the agenda? Come, you need to step forward, state your name, and share with us your wisdom.
Well, thank you for listening. I'll thank you in advance. I've never done this before, so I'm not, you know, I'm a little fish out of the water here. But I've come, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time, I guess, but I'm coming to plead with the supervisors of Fresno County for, to enforce, not enforce, but actually to create and enforce a loud music ordinance. I have been a happy 46-year county resident up until a few months back. We have some new neighbors who are not respective of boundaries of loud music. And Councilman Mendez, I will compliment you, I reached out to your office. I was instructed by the Sheriff's Department because they have been out multiple times, and I got such a quick response, I was, I'm going to chuck it, this is very, this is very heartfelt, and I'm sorry, but it's a, it's a single dwelling that is having events, as per I know, without permits in their residence multiple times a month, Fridays and Saturday nights, with music that you can hear, I can hear, inside my home with dual pane windows thumping. Needless to say, I can no longer go sit on my country patio that I moved to for peace and quiet and a wonderful place to raise children. I, I'm unable to do that anymore because of their disrespect for the impediment that they, they've put on the neighbors around, and not just myself. There's, I live on South Avenue, this residence is on South Avenue. There are residents on Fruit Avenue that are complaining. So I don't, I, I started with the Sheriff's Department because that's the most logical thing. So they will come out, they are great, great public service people. And they have gone up, they've spoken with the resident, they turn down the music while the deputy is there, and as he gets down the road, they turn it up even louder than they did before. We can continue to call the deputies, but my point, and I had this conversation with this particular neighbor, I believe the deputies have more important things to deal with than having to police somebody's music. Now, I've been told from deputies that Fresno County does not have, does not have an ordinance in place. So they have to go to the penal code of the state of California, which is 415, which is very vague, and it makes it nearly impossible for our deputies to enforce. So I'm coming to you, like I said, I'm pleading because I don't know what else to do. I don't want to leave my home, but I've checked Madera County has an ordinance, Kern County has an ordinance, Tulare County, all have ordinances written specifically for their counties that their deputies can safely enforce and have some authority over.
On December the 5th, we have a noise ordinance, which is coming, oh, excuse me, December the 3rd, which is the first meeting we have in December. We have a noise ordinance actually to deal with this very issue because every single one of us up here have dealt with noise issues. And that has, over the course of about the last seven months, staff has been trying to figure out what can be done to implement some type of an ordinance to deal with issues like this. I would encourage you to, to continue to work with Supervisor Mendez's office. As soon as that language is finished, county council's office is involved, public health is involved, and actually, the sheriff's office brought this item forward because they are, they are going to so many different noise complaints. They said, we need to find a way to create some kind of a structure so there's more teeth to try to resolve these issues, especially places where there's repeat offenders. So we hear you, Supervisor Mendez's staff hears you, and on December 3rd, there's an ordinance coming back. I would encourage you to continue to work with the supervisor's office and to call the deputies when the noise is taking place because the record of these things are important. And if they're having illegal events there, that falls, they're, they're violating actually our maybe zoning ordinance. They don't have a, you know, a variance or the right to do that. We can take some action through code enforcement, but I'm here to say, I'm sorry, residents shouldn't have to deal with stuff like this, but we want to make sure that we do this right, and we've been very methodical in creating this noise ordinance, which is going to come to us on the 3rd.
And I, and I thank you for that, but I will also say that the deputies in particular have said it doesn't, it, we don't need a noise ordinance per se, we need a loud music. So maybe those are two different, maybe it's two different things that need to be.
Mr. Seiderberg, can you address that for this lady, please?
Yeah, I can. The, the ordinance in, in each place are, are noise ordinances. Under the penal code, particularly if you're willing to file the complaint, the sheriff can enforce that. The difficulty usually under that is they have to have a victim that's willing to complain on the criminal side, which is why we have the civil part coming, which will enable the sheriff's deputy on their own to cite the people, you know, for the noise. Also, if you can keep your communication with Supervisor Mendez's district, if you have evidence of somebody holding an event center, if we can get detailed evidence of that, my office can file a, what's called a action under Business and Professions Code 17,200, if we have evidence that they're having a commercial thing there and not just, you know, private parties. But if you have evidence like that, we have other options as well.
All you have to do is drive by and take a picture.
Well, I have lots of.
And then call the deputies out.
And I have recorded the music from my patio.
Yep.
So, I mean, I'm very, I'm very passionate about this.
Tell the sheriff if you want to file a complaint, they, they have a criminal action as well.
Well, and let me just state also, so Councilman Mendez's office referred me to code enforcement.
Yeah.
And I have been emailing them and having conversation, but I kind of felt like I hit a wall. They, the last response I had was that they did not have enough information to kind of proceed with anything other than a courtesy letter because I didn't give them enough information to actually show that they're having these events. And I said, well, I consider event tents in your.
Call me at, call me at my office, I'll walk you through the steps.
Okay, because I was going to say, there's tents up, there's porta potties, it's life bands, it's not a family gathering. There are cars up and down our street.
Yep.
I mean, it's, I'm sorry, I'm probably out of time.
Sorry you had to come here, but thank you for coming here because I've had a call, even in, in an unincorporated community, I've had the sheriff's actually shut some stuff down, but it was so loud, you didn't know exactly where it was at, you didn't know what house it was.
Yeah.
So I'm very familiar with what you're trying to.
I appreciate that.
Trying to do.
I appreciate that.
Personally familiar.
Okay, thank you.
Is the property currently being rented or does the property owner live there?
Owner, they just, they bought it probably a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
For 46 years, we had the same wonderful neighbors and it was peaceful, and now it's, you know, life goes on and it changes.
Right.
But I don't want my neighborhood to change. I don't think it should have to.
Sometimes after so many ordinances, some communities have a deal that if they continue this illegal practice, that after so many letters that the county stands or whoever's in jurisdiction, they can start charging them, fining them.
Yeah, well, that's the, the, the civil ordinance that's coming forward will have an immediate fine schedule. There'll still be discretion of the officer to handle, you know, the first interaction so that we're not finding everybody for, you know, single incidents.
Come back on the, on the 3rd.
But this has got.
I will, I will.
Particularly if we have evidence of a commercial venture, we have other tools that we can use. Or if we have a complaining witness, just individual circumstances, that's usually what the problem the deputies have is nobody wants to be the complaining witness.
Right.
So they don't have a victim for the disturbing the peace crime.
Yes.
But if they do, if neighbors are willing to do that, they've got a criminal venue as well.
Well, I know that the deputies, in closing, I know the deputy, they have given a citation. I had a conversation with this neighbor a few weeks ago during one of the events, and he told me that he didn't need a permit. He had been to the county, and Fresno County told him he did not need a permit to hold these events and informed me that he would be having more. So I'm just saying, they are events, he just told me he's having them, and he's going to continue to have them as long. And if, if without an ordinance, I guess, in place and the penalty, what I'm understanding is if there is a fine, the county goes out and says, okay, here's your $500 fine for breaking the rules. Well, they just made $10,000 renting their property. What do you think $500 means to them? They're going to continue to do it. That's how I feel, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will see you on the 3rd.
Excellent, thank you very much. Code enforcement is a top priority of this board. I think we've communicated that clearly to staff, and so, and we've allocated resources to code enforcement. So I hope our code enforcement team is the A team. But again, on the 3rd, we will give some more tools to code enforcement and law enforcement. So anyone else wishing to comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion.
Now, at this time, you could ask for public comment for closed session items 15 through 19.
Anyone wishing to comment on closed session items? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion. Dan, can we adjourn following closed session or do we need to come back and report out?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we are not anticipating any reports out of closed session, so if the board chooses, it can adjourn following closed session.
Is there a motion to do just that?
Some would.
Sir, motion is second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? We will adjourn following closed session.